All right, we have 6:30. We'll call the meeting to order. We can start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, are there any additions to the agenda?
I would like to add discussion about expanding outdoor space for bars and restaurants.
For what?
Bars and restaurants.
Expanding additional space for bars and restaurants?
Correct. Or outdoor space for bars and restaurants.
Additional outdoor space for bars and restaurants. All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda with the one addition, 6 for A, expanding additional outdoor space for bars and restaurants.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, we have a second. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. It'll take us to public comments. If there's anyone who'd like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments and move to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled through further discussion? I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Jump right into 6 1A, Maggie, the contract agreement between Brunton Architects.
Okay, so this item was on the last work session being brought to you tonight. This item relates to the contract agreement between the City of Mayor and Brunton Architects for the proposed fire station. Brunton Architects provides architectural, structural, civil, mechanical, and electrical design services. And the contract includes design services for a pre-cast concrete fire station of approximately 12,560 square feet. As you know, given this, given the city's ultimate funding source or financing option, compensation to Brunton would be based on a percentage of 8% of the cost of work. If USDA, they're stating 9%. I guess there's additional paperwork and hoops that they have to go through to, if, if we were to finance through that method. So the architect is proposing the following compensation for the following phases. So there's the schematic design phase, which is 25%. That has already been completed. There's the design development phase, which is 20%. The construction documents phase, which is 45%. And then the bidding and negotiation construction phase, which is 10%. So to date, the three last phases have not been completed, but, but the schematic phase, design phase has. So 25% completed is $63,171. And just so that the council's aware, this was brought up at the workshop, that it would be due upon signing with a contract with Brunton Architects. But since the city has not finalized the financing mechanism for the project to date, the architect is willing to work with the city. The city attorney has reviewed the proposed contract. And there were questions at the previous meeting, and Cory Brunton was here to answer questions as well as the attorney. So based on those discussions, the final contract is being presented tonight. So with that, that's one part of the discussion is finalizing this contract. And then also the next steps, I think the question would be, what does that mean once the contract is signed? It would mean that, that the project is, is essentially moving forward to some capacity. So my recommendations after passing this contract would be to, to kind of start working on a timeline that not only includes Brunton's proposed timeline, but some other timelines that I've been, related to the project that I've been working on. So that would be that we would need to start doing our open houses, either virtually, we could do it by Zoom or appointment-based. So if, if people did feel like they wanted to come in and see the station and, and the needs, we would, we would be doing that by appointment-based, obviously with PPE and, and necessary precautions. That's my recommendation. We would have to get, you know, obviously notice that. In addition, we would need to finalize the capital improvement plan that I've been working on to finance the project. That's, that was a discussion that we had at a previous council meeting as to how we were going to finance it. And that was through a CIP bond. So I am going to be finalizing that with our financial advisor. That does require eventually a public hearing. And then a 30-day period where a reverse referendum could be filed. We would also have to get the planning commission involved in, at some point, to do a review of the building and make sure it meets city code. That also requires a public hearing. And then also, one suggestion is, that I'm making, and I've talked to Andy and Rod about, is establishing a building committee. It could be, I'm going to talk with them more about it. I know we've had a fire station committee. Maybe expanding on that current committee or recreating a new committee. But I think the base of the committee would be at least me, Rod, Andy, a council member, and then whoever else we decide. But all these things kind of have to wrap together if we're going to try and keep, you know, try to keep this project moving forward. So my suggestion would be to continue this process and to move ahead with the design development phase. As I said, it's, there's essentially four or five timelines working together here. So while I'm working on the other phases, I think Cory would then start this phase. That's 20% of the next phase, is 20%. And it would be about one month. And so then I did explain that once we reach that final part, we would kind of reassess where we're at with everything. And we won't, we won't continue to move forward unless, just, just, we need to stop and reassess and kind of see where we're at with everything, especially related to COVID-19 and where we're at. So there's kind of some stopping areas along the way. But we do need to kind of work on all these things at once. So I just wanted to give you that update with kind of what my recommendation is, kind of what my plans are to keep this project moving forward, and just kind of what to expect with signing this contract. So with that, I do, I am available for any questions.
Any questions for Maggie?
9% looking for professional fees. Is that pretty standard for a building like this?
Yeah, we have talked to the engineer and we have looked at other communities. Again, it would be 8%. If, if it wasn't USDA, we might not go with USDA. So it would be 9% if it was USDA. But yeah, depending on how we bid it out, yeah, it's, it would, it would be about 8%, which is pretty common.
How many companies bid on this project?
Bid on this project? We have not sent it out for bid yet. So that is part of the phase where eventually we would get to the bidding phase based on the schematics. They would bid on what it would cost to, to construct this building. And then at that time, we would have the hard costs and essentially go out for a CIP bond. So right now, it's just a guess, kind of like an, an assumption of what we think it would cost to build this building, which I believe is about 3.1 billion.
Were you able to tie off with Cory on the invoice that he submitted that he'd be willing to let us get our financing?
Yes, so. Yep, I did talk with Cory, and he did say that he could be flexible with the payment that we already owe. So we can, he would be able to split that up with, in the next coming months, until we get our financing together when we put it out for bid. Then we would then kind of reimburse that account. But my suggestion would be to pay it out of the fire capital fund.
And then reimburse it when we get the?
When we get the bond, yep. Right, well, right now, it's about 300, a little over 300,000. I know, I still have to talk to the fire chief. I know we have some other projects going on. But I think if we're able to pay out some of these project costs ahead of time and then reimburse, I think we could figure something out with some other. I think we're still, there's still discussion about a tanker. But I don't, we, we haven't come to any decision on that yet. So again, I think we can figure something out.
Any other questions? I assume this contract's going to go through the entire project, correct?
Correct.
So we don't need to be overly concerned with Exhibit A where it says 2020 hours? I mean, those are the hours we're going to get through the project, I assume?
Right, I think when this was, this.
I mean, if it goes into 2021, that's contract hours, correct? Or does exhibit, or can that exhibit change?
I believe that that would be the contract, but I can get, I can get clarification.
Any other questions? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the contract between Brunton Architects and the City of Mayor for the fire station.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? So for me, what I'd like to do, I think it's really important before we get too far down, is really get some of that public input and have some of those meetings right away and see what kind of input we may have for the building, for the design of it, and those kinds of things. And just feedback on where residents stand. I don't want to get too far into Phase Two before that happens. For me, I think that's a pretty big priority is to get the residents involved in that. So I'd like to see that.
So if we, if we vote for the contract right now, that's not saying we still have to approve that he move forward into Phase Two?
Well, I would, I'm, no, this is the contract. So you can make two motions. I'm, well, obviously, so with that second explanation that I was saying, I, my suggestion would be to start kind of like all of the four to five timelines. And one of those timelines would be that second phase. So I am.
That's not what we're voting on right now.
But you can, that's what I'm saying. So the contract would just be the contract. You can do a second motion if you want to, to start Phase Two. But you can also do a motion that doesn't allow that as well.
Yeah, correct, right, I was just to approve the contract.
Thank you.
And I, I'm assuming, Maggie, you'll be driving everything going forward, authorizing things where you see fit to have things come back to council. You'll bring it back to council as appropriate.
Right.
And as you get new timelines together, new things as we start getting into this.
Correct.
That being said, I kind of feel, I'm getting the feeling from council that they're, kind of feel like almost everything should come back to them. You know what I mean?
Well, any money, any money spent has to.
Well, yeah, okay. It's, I just think that council has kind of portrayed the idea that they would like a little bit more involvement or their ideas heard than what has happened so far. So I'm, that's just, that was just what I was thinking, I don't know.
Where do you stand on it? I mean, what do you, what, when we talk about council, including yourself, I mean, what? I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
I guess a clear definition of what it is you want her to decide and go ahead with.
Specifically, or us, when you say you, or is it us?
You're the one who made the comment, so.
I mean, I can clarify. So what I would be moving forward with after tonight would be working with them on, on a, educating the public and getting that information set up. The thing that I would bring back to council, everything that relates to the finance. So I wouldn't move forward with anything, I, I can't move forward without council approval related to capital improvement plan and the financing. So that would come back. Creating a payment schedule with Cory Brunton, that would come back. And then, what was the other piece?
The materials that we're going to present at the informational meetings.
I thought that was already presented and approved of.
Right, we, we, we did present those and we did approve them. We just never used them because COVID kind of canceled those open houses. So those would, those would probably stay the same. And then I would be working with them on a building committee, which I'd have to, we have to talk about who would be on that and if it would be an expansion of the current fire station committee or what. So, and then my only other thing would be, I would need your approval to move ahead with the second phase. So I would just be moving forward with your approval on, and I would bring back everything because I, I can't move forward without that approval, so.
And of course, if we meet as a committee outside of, usually there's an update.
Right.
Good deal.
And then I would say with like the public stuff, make sure, you know, we, if we do like a Zoom meeting, that people have, if they don't have access to an internet, you know, or a computer to be able to watch it, you know, do we get creative with that?
Yeah.
Like by appointment, you know, some people might not.
You know, by appointment to go visit.
Yep, we would do by appointment. I think that would be really important for people who don't have access.
And we have to put it out there.
Yep.
Just give people the opportunity to comment on it. Any other discussion?
I don't believe public input is through a Zoom meeting. I mean, if we have to wait to have a, have a public hearing, a meeting on this to get information, I hope that's what I'd rather do.
I think we can do some sort of, so anyway, I think we're getting off the whole subject, but I think we can do other things than a Zoom meeting that involve the internet and watching some sort of a clip or whatever that we maybe put together as a committee, taking people through the current firehouse and through the whatever. But I also think that we're getting to a point where we can kind of control how many people come in the building at a time, maybe, you know, keep them socially distanced and, and do it that way, too. Typically, at these things, the whole community doesn't show up at once. You know, if you get, this one might have a little bit more interest. But, I mean, I think there's more creative things that we can do to get people actually safely to see it with their own eyes, rather than.
Create a YouTube something or other and put it out on YouTube and put a link on our Facebook, Twitter.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
You know, things like that, so.
Other things.
But to your point, Tyce, I, I agree. I think we are getting to that point now. We can get more and more people down there with social distancing. We can have people wear masks. We can have, you know, there'll be a certain number of people who won't feel comfortable even doing that. So we got, you know, so some of these stuff might be good for them who choose not to, you know, who might.
Right.
Might not feel safe going down there. But I do think it's important to get that out there. I would prefer face-to-face, but we can move people along through there and have different stations set up through there, I think.
But personally, for me, I don't want to have, I don't want to micromanage every step with this fire station. I would prefer, you know, committees, the fire department, the architects, do their thing, bring it back to, bring it back to us for the financing piece. I, personally, I don't want to, I don't want to micromanage this. I don't see a point in city council micromanaging this, so that's my opinion.
I tend to agree.
Yeah.
As long as we have the administrator running the, the project as she should and take care of that, I think that's, I don't have a problem with that either.
Just getting the updates from the committee.
It's just, yeah, it's just getting updates, keeping that line of communication open. So we're aware of what's going on as, as we get talked to with residents. So we're up to speed on, on all aspects of it. But Maggie should have a good handle on the financial part of things and where we're at. And again, if, if we run into some roadblocks, we'll, we'll get through them and work around them. You know, as we talked earlier, we don't know what's going to happen with LGA or what's going on with the state. And if that gets caught in and we get into budgeting and we have to do, we'll work through that as it comes up, so. Any other discussion on this? All right, we have a motion, a second, to approve the contract with Brunton Architects and Engineers and the City of Mayor for the proposed fire station. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Nope. Motion carries four one. Six to A, Maggie, COVID-19 preparedness plan in general discussion.
Okay, so this item is for discussion and for potential adoption by the city council.
I'm sorry.
Oh, so the city looks to reopen a preparedness plan that's been drafted outlining the steps that we would take to ensure the safety of staff and residents and non-residents visiting public facilities and spaces. So like most organizations looking to reopen, preparedness plans are, are being prepared to show that preventative measures are being taken seriously as we strive to kind of get back to normal. So the plan focuses on prevention measures, social distancing measures, increased housekeeping, communications, and identification isolation if one were to be exposed or infected. And as you are aware, the city has been operating kind of only on a central service basis with appointments only to a closed city hall. Some meetings have been taken, or taken place via Zoom. Parks have signs that educate on social distancing and the risk. The fire department has been training through online methods. Public works have been, they've been driving in separate vehicles. And then there's been an extra emphasis on extra cleaning and hand washing. And the community center has been closed, so. So what I did was I kind of put that as Phase One. Because as you know, we're kind of entering, we're going to be entering Phase Two, but as we reassess things, we might have to go back to Phase One. So just as, as we kind of get updates at the state and county level, we just never know what's going to happen. So at this time effective next Monday, June 1st, I'm proposing to go into Phase Two. So this would reopen city hall with measures taken to ensure the safety of staff and visitors. So we would mark the floor. We usually don't get too many visitors at once, but we would mark the floor. We would have hand sanitizers still there. So we would kind of have some signs up, just use hands sanitizer or wash hands before conducting business. Council and commission meetings will start in person again in the council chambers, but we would still maintain social distancing and have hand sanitizer available and masks if people feel the need to wear them. We internally, workstations will remain distance. Public works will still keep separate vehicles. Hand washing will be promoted more regularly, and additional cleaning will be done in high-use areas. We will open the community center to groups of a certain size as recommended by the state. So right now, it's 10 until May 31st, and then we don't know what it'll be after that. If public works were to, as they do now, or they should be doing now, we'd probably start doing in-home appointments again. We do on a, like, if it's necessary right now. But if going into homes, they would have to wear masks. Fire department, so they, I'm, I'm proposing to do virtual meetings when you can. Hands-on training will resume though, because it is necessary for the fire department to, to keep their hands-on training. But they're going to be doing it with social distancing in mind in smaller groups. So they'll break the groups up into per captain and then train and then rotate. And then their meetings, if they hold their, their monthly meetings, again, we need to figure out what's, I think their next meeting is after June 1st. And so we'll see what the numbers are at. But if it's at, still at 10, we would recommend wearing face masks at those meetings. They would, their idea is to pull out the trucks and then kind of social distance at the fire station in the bay. So with that plan, I wanted to remove one thing. I just wanted to remove that public works, or if any staff were in a car together, that they wear PPE. Because we, I'm proposing that that not be a scenario.
For Phase Two, they'll still stay separate?
Yes. Yep. So with that, the next step for me would be to sit down with staff and educate them kind of of this plan, or I've already talked to them about what needs to happen. But this plan obviously needs to have the employees' support and then, so that we can take the measures that we need to take to protect the public coming in. So with that, any questions or comments? I'm willing to make any changes yet, but I am looking for approval of this plan. So effective next Monday, we can start implementing Phase Two.
Chief, do you have anything you want to add, or has she covered it okay, or you're good with that?
I reviewed the template that was put out by the Department of Labor and Industry, and that's obviously what you had used.
Yep.
So I appreciate that. Just a couple little tweaks.
Okay.
Under the housekeeping, we need to put down in there the supplies that we have and/or need.
Okay.
And what we're going to use those cleanings for. And didn't we have our cleaning service also increase?
We authorize it if we need to, so that's a good point, so we can.
Community center, we can increase it?
Yeah, yep. So I know you guys approved doing it. We haven't because city hall has been closed. And we've just been doing a little bit of the internal stuff during the week, and then they do a full clean once a week. But yeah, my intention was that once we start getting more traffic, we would definitely consider.
Do they ever go to the fire station or public works?
When I talked to, when I talked to public works, they said they were just going to take care of their own areas. I think that's what you guys had mentioned, too. You guys would just wipe down your own areas. Yep.
So can we put in, in here, in our plan that, you know, as we open up further city hall and the community center, open up further, you know, we have the cleaning services under contract that we can utilize?
Yes.
And then under communications and training, the template wants to know how, how training and ongoing training provided to all workers who did not receive the initial training, the template wants to know how those people will be receiving that training.
Okay.
And that was all.
Perfect.
My only comment, and I talked a little bit about this with Andy earlier, is I, I just feel at the fire station, the meetings with groups of 30 people, I'd like to see them all, I'd like to see it mandatory to wear masks for all our firefighters down there for those meetings. I understand in training now, because we can divide up in groups, and they're going to, they're going to divide groups, so that helps. It's going to be about seven or eight people per group. And sometimes you can't have a mask on if you're, depending on what they're doing for their training. But for the meetings themselves, when we get 30 people down there, I personally would like to see mandatory masks for that for Phase Two.
My concern would be is that we're, we're putting them in a box. I would rather have it written as, have them wear masks as, you know, per guidance, CDC guidance. Because CDC is going to change their minds all the time.
Okay.
So if we can say per CDC guidance, because if we say that you have to wear a mask and all of a sudden the CDC says no.
Yep.
I don't want 30 guys down there wearing a mask.
Absolutely. I'm good with that. I'm good with that. I just obviously don't want.
Right.
All of our firefighters and potential infected at once, and we got to deal with that, so. All right, yeah, I'm plenty good with that. Do you need a motion, Maggie, to?
Yep, with, with changes.
Remove the preparedness plan with the minor corrections that we've discussed along with moving into Phase Two of the. Prove the preparedness plan with the minor corrections that we've discussed, along with moving into phase two of the, phase two of the current plan.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries five, zero. Thank you. All right, six, three, a, water treatment plant and well project, advertise and bid.
Okay, so in your packet is a memo from the city engineer. So last October, the city authorized Bolton and Mink to prepare plans and specs for the well and water treatment plan improvements. As you are aware, it includes the filter cell addition, replacement of high-service pumps, replacement of chlor- the chlorination system, and constructing the supply well. So those plans are almost complete, and the engineering firm is requesting to authorize and advertise and advert, authorize to advertise the bid for the projects. And then once the bids come in, the city will know an exact dollar amount for those projects. And then it will come back to the council, and the city will be financing those projects through the public facility authority loans. And then I did provide you with some, just some information, you looked at, at a previous meeting, just a little refresher, that the, the well is projected to cost between 400 and 500,000. And then the water treatment plant project is about 375 to 475. So this will kind of give us an idea of what the final numbers will be. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to send this out for bid, these out for bid.
Go ahead.
So this is different than the water tower painting project?
Yep, so that's already been put up for bid.
Okay.
That'll come back when the bids come in, and then we will look at the financing for that separately than these.
Okay, and then this is more, okay. Okay. There's a lot of water.
There's a lot of projects going on.
Thanks for the clarification.
And this aligns with Dave's timeline that he presented last night.
Yep, yep, it does.
I'll look for a motion to authorize Bolton and Mink to advertise for bid for the well and water treatment plant improvement projects.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries five, zero. That will take us to six, four, a, additional outdoor seating for bars and restaurants.
Mr. Mayor and fellow council members, I know we have one bar, bar only, and then two other restaurant bars. And on May 20th, Governor Walz said that the cities need to get creative and look at temporary solutions such as allowing sidewalk and parklets for these businesses to expand to allow more outdoor seating. So I, I have been doing some research, major cities, Tampa, Cincinnati, Chicago, New York, LA, Las Vegas, even Stillwater recently. Internationally also, are, are closing streets off, so that way these restaurants and bars can have more outdoor seating area. So in looking at our city code, the city code 9420 says that in accordance with authority granted to the city under the state and federal statutory administrative and common law, the city hereby elects pursuant to this chapter to manage the rights of way within its jurisdiction. So basically, we have the ability as a city council to decide what's going, what we can do with city streets, not necessarily county, and not like Highway 25, but with city streets. We really, our, our city code does not really talk about alleyways. So, and I was thinking about, okay, you know, everybody has a little bit of outdoor space. Knuckleheads has a little, Hells has a little, Agave has a little. Is there any way that we can expand that? You know, for example, like with Agave, can we, can we close off part of Fifth Street? And have him expand a seating area out there? Or, you know, is there something we can do in the alleyways or on an abutting street with like knuckleheads or hells to give them some more outdoor space so more people can come? Because we're really, I mean, with the small amount of space they have, we're really limiting the amount of people they can have. And if we could, if that can have 50 people max as of June 1st, it might be 100 on June 12th, we don't know.
So we talked a little bit about this, Maggie, and so Maggie is going to look into this, so one of the concerns was about parking, now do we have enough spaces? Or that, because, you know, we want to try to get ahead of it, so I don't know if Maggie, if you've had a chance to talk to.
Um, yeah.
Seems to me if we reduce the number of people who can be there, we shouldn't need to have all our parking spaces either, but.
Yeah, so, so far, I haven't talked to Hells, but to. Not entirely, so where I started was talking to the businesses. And so as of currently, as, from what I've heard, Agave and Knuckleheads are fine with the outdoor seating right now. But I, I am still looking at, like, I think we can just do a temporary zoning where we just, we can pass a resolution that would allow temporary expansion. But I haven't had anybody actually request it yet.
Okay, because I talked to, I talked to a couple owners, and the, the two that I talked to said there's no way they can get 50 people out there with the social distancing in the space that they currently have, and they would like to see some assistance, so my brain was just kind of going, I'm like, well, maybe Agave can use some of their parking area and then have people park on Fifth or park on Ash or even 25 and.
Yeah, we can definitely do it.
Full disclosure, I did meet with Knuckleheads last Thursday.
Okay.
They've indicated they're fine.
Okay.
That they're going to be fine, I haven't talked to the other.
But currently their patrons are sitting on the front walk. On sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I understand that. They think they can get them on their patio. What I indicated to them is, if you feel you can't, I 100% support doing it, whatever we can do to expand your back alley, but you guys should come with a plan. How are you going to handle screen, you know, or fencing, or, or noise complaints, or those, you know, some sort of a plan and come.
That's some of the concessions that we make.
Come request it.
There's sidewalk cafes all over the place probably down in the cities, and maybe that's not such a bad thing right now.
Yeah.
Distance some people.
Yeah, we just have to.
Their businesses so they can have more people in.
I'd like to do like a blanket, like, we're willing to work, we present that to the businesses and say, come back with a plan, if you want more space. Definitely can.
I've talked to two of them about.
We support you in that decision and.
I've been making it clear as I talk to people that I will 100% support what we can do to get people in there, we can.
Yeah, so I talked to Knuckleheads as well, and, yeah, we just need a, a plan, I just told them the same thing as you did, we need a plan, but they also need to talk to their insurance company too, because alcohol cannot go outside where they, where they originally plan, or they're, where they told their insurance to, that they would be selling it. So they do, I told them they need to do that as well, to make sure they're insured. But they're, but I did say again that the city would be supportive and that we would, you know, if they did come with a plan, that we would look at it and, and do some sort of temporary, or we, we would look into doing a temporary or bringing it to council to do a temporary thing.
Because, you know, yes, we do have the right to do what we need to with city streets. Stillwater just blocked off their main street, which is a state highway, so apparently they got Mendocque approval on that. But, you know, and to, what I would like to see us do is waive any permit fees.
Okay.
If that's what they choose to do, and then of course, you know, following the other.
What kind of permits?
A permit that's required if they want to, like, cut off parts of the streets and stuff like that, you know.
I know we have a permit for street closure, but I don't know if we have, I don't know if we have one for partial. But I'll, I'll look into it, but yeah, if there's any, so, most of the time, like, we would charge like a admin fee, like, just to cover our admin fee, but.
Let me go ahead and waive that.
Yeah.
As long as they come to us with a plan and have their insurance. And waive the fees, is that something that we can agree on as a council, so that way they don't have to come back to council in two weeks? And, I mean, because June 1st is just next week, and if they get out there June 1st and go, man, this is just not enough, we need to expand. And if they talk to Maggie the second day.
It's going to be best if they put up some sort of temporary fencing for their area. That's probably something their insurance would require anyway.
I think they need to, yeah.
It just like, it keeps cars out of where people might be wanting to sit or stand or.
Yeah, I think you have to.
I think you have to mark off a designated area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it has to be enclosed if you're selling alcohol.
Because typically, our requirements right now is submitting a permit application with all the attachments, a scaled drawing, showing the location of the area, yada, 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 verifying the insurance policy, you know, all that stuff. And, you know, I, I want to make it as easy as we can for them, so when they do open on June 1st, if that's not enough, they can come and talk to Maggie on June 2nd and say, we need help. I don't want them to have to wait an entire another week before coming to city council before getting a yes or a no. As long as they have everything in place, per our code, can we waive the permit fee and allow them to move forward without coming into city council for additional approval?
I don't know if I see a downside to that.
No.
I think I would be okay with that. As long as Maggie gets what we need and, I don't see a problem with that. It'd be that or else have a special meeting too, and I'd have a special meeting anytime, you know, they're, they're obvious, like you said, they got to see what's going to happen, they don't know what's going to happen, and it doesn't look like next week's going to be rainy, so that's good, you know, but.
I just don't want to stand in their way because it's been long enough, it's been hard enough on them, and I don't want to stand in their way if, you know, this keeps them surviving, we don't have a lot of businesses in this town, and we got to keep them going.
Is there a specific motion you would like to make?
I would like to make a motion to allow the bars and restaurants to expand their outdoor space as needed, following city code guidelines and waiving permit fees.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? And is that, is that based on state's recommendation of 50 people right now, and if that expand, you know, we follow the state's recommendations on number of people?
Yes.
So if they feel they can seat 50 right now, there shouldn't be any need to expand.
But if the governor on the 12th says 100, we need to expand, so.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries five, zero. City council reports, Eric, can I?
No, but I did see people using the parking pad to go to the park. So it's just, it's nice to see, I saw two vans with kids and to come and use the park, so.
Does anything to report on? All right, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
A motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? We are adjourned.